Union High School District. Thank you for taking the time to come out here and learn a little bit more about our budget, the expenditures, the revenues that go into operating a school district, as well as some of the funding formulas that help develop those things, and then in the end it develops the tax levy calculation. So we'll get started here. I want to talk a little bit about the budget timeline and what goes into putting this budget together. Between December and April, there's a lot of preliminary budget work being done at the administrative level and then ultimately at the board level. April 2nd, the Finance Committee took a look at the budget, reviewed it, and brought that budget forward to the Board meeting on April 10th, where the preliminary budget was approved, and that's the budget that you're being presented with tonight.
[inaudible]
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm Jeff Gross. I'm the Director of Business Services for the Arrowhead School District. Just started on July 1st this year, so I'm new to the district. You've heard Steve Kopecky give this presentation for several years, and I know I've got some big shoes to fill, but I learned under Steve. I did some internship work with him back in the day, and so it's nice to come back to the district here and have a lot of familiar faces that I've worked with in the past. Thank you for asking that question. Between May and October, so now we're in August here, we're monitoring the budget for budget adjustments. We know we've had a state budget approved since this budget was approved, so there will be some adjustments that we'll be banking before we finalize the budget at the end of October and certify the levy. Late October and November, we'll certify the levy and hand that over to the municipalities. As you're building your budget and you're determining what revenues you have to work with, enrollment plays a big factor in that. And so we're taking a look here at the head count enrollment and the history of that from for the last 10 years. And you can see, after stabilizing from 2009-10 through about 2014-15, we've seen some declines over the past four or five years here. And the next slide you'll see, we're projecting some additional declines. But for the upcoming year, this is head count, so it's not the membership count, but it is the number of kids in our seats, including open enrollment heads or students. And we're projecting a decrease of about 2% going into the 1920 school year. This is just a look at this enrollment projection, comparing it to last year by grade level. So you can see that in the blue, we have the 18-19 numbers, and in the green, the 19-20 numbers. So you can see our freshman class is coming in much smaller than last year's freshman class, from 535 last year to 480. The 10th grade about even, 11th graders down again, about 25 or so students, and then a slight increase in the 12th grade class. So when you add those all together, you see the 2% decline that I talked about in the previous slide. This is a look at some of the past and what we're projecting into the next five years. So you can see that decline that we started in 2015-16 continues as far as our projections go into 2024-25. And we have a pretty good prediction of this because of the K-8 feeder schools that feed into our high school district here. It's a pretty good indicator. So especially the first two years are pretty solid, that we know we'll see these declines. And that's going to have a significant impact on the revenues that we're able to have available to us to operate the district with. Here's a look at the General Fund and the Capital Expansion Fund revenues. These are the two funds that are controlled by the revenue limit calculation, and that's why we're pulling these out. You can see that local sources of revenue make up 71% of our revenues available through the revenue limit formula, and state sources 22%. So those are our major funding sources. The local sources, the majority of that 70% is tax levy. There's also some student fees, some K-8 receipts, some interest income, but those are really small numbers in comparison to the overall tax levy. And then when we get into the state sources, at 22%, the majority of that is coming through the form of equalization aid, and then another large majority, second most, coming through the per pupil categorical aid. And that's a new aid that came into place in 2012-13. So last year, we saw $650 to $4 per student on that per pupil amount. This year, going into the new budget, not built into tonight's, but we know that that will go up because that number changed with the Governor's Budget Proposal, or the Governor's Budget that was actually acted on and approved for the 19-year. So we'll make those adjustments when we get into the setting the levy and finalizing the budget in October. Here's a look at our state equalization aid reimbursement. And you can see it's been up and down. When you look back for 10 years, the largest number back in '13-14, but since that 2013-14 peak, and that's a result of high student counts back in those years, and as we've seen declines in student count, we have a higher property value per student, and that's an important number as you're determining how much equalization aid you have to work with or you're going to get from the state. And so as that property value per member or per pupil amount goes up, you have less aid coming into the district. So the state aid is calculated and measured by your value per student, property value per student. This is a look at the expenditure side. So we were talking revenues in the previous slides, and now we're moving on to the expenditures. And we are people business. We're here to teach students, so it takes a lot of people to do that. And so you can see the majority of our expenditures are on the personnel side. The blue line is looking at 2019-20 in comparison to 10 years ago in 2010-11. So back in '10-11, we were spending almost 75%, 74% on personnel, and now we're spending 66%. There's been significant changes in the benefit plans over those years, as well as some of the staffing decreases to align with the student count going down. Here's a look at our history of the buildings and grounds projects and the budget associated with that and the Capital Expansion Fund. The white line is showing all buildings and ground projects, and then we also have that Capital Expansion Fund levy to help support some of the long-term capital projects. And you can see that levy is in the red line there. It's decreasing a little bit this year by about $50,000 compared to last year, remaining fairly stable though since 2016-17, right around that $300,000 range over those years. And this is what we use for building envelope, roofs, walls, windows, that type of thing. And then the gray line is for other buildings and grounds projects around the district to keep our facilities up to date and optimal for student learning. As we look at the Capital Expansion Fund, this was established in 2004-5 for the first time. It's a segregated fund that can only be used for capital project-type work in the district. It was recommended by the auditors as a prudent management tool. And so what it allows you to do is take expenditures that you might have in one year and spread those expenditures out into the future, and it helps you on your aid calculation. So if you can spread expenditures over time and not have it all hit in one year, it might not have as significant of a negative impact on your aid calculation going into the next year. So it's a great funding tool for that way, and it also helps us keep our facilities up to date. And as I said earlier, the roofing and building envelope repairs is what we include in this Fund 41 or Capital Expansion Fund budget. The other projects that are funded through Fund 10 are the General Fund. So whenever we take funds out of the General Fund and use it on buildings and facilities, it's less for the classroom. So we have to manage and balance that to be sure we're keeping our facilities up to date and useful for our students, at the same time keeping as much in the classroom as possible. So here's some of the projects that we're doing with our General Fund and the capital side, or the improvement side, and that's some of the roofing and building envelope repairs are also included in here. We did some HVAC lighting upgrades to the North Woods Room, North Campus Woods Room and Fitness Center. We replaced some door hardware as part of our school safety initiative, rekeying the locks and putting in new key systems so a teacher can just punch the button, push the button on their doorknob now, and it'll lock the classroom door rather than having to take their keys out of their pocket and try to lock that door. So that was a safety initiative put into place this year. We'll be replacing a kiln at South Campus. And then we're just getting started with a pedestrian path for safe walking for students between North and South Campus, and some fencing and a pad to go in place for some visitor bleachers coming in the future. So that work probably won't start until spring, but we do have a portion of that in this budget to get started on it. Here's a look at our personnel budget and where the spend is in that personnel budget. So we said 71% of our overall budget is on personnel. So if you pull that 71% out and now divvy that up into what percent is teachers, extracurricular retirement, so 65% of it, obviously our heaviest staff is in the teaching area, which is where we want them, teaching the kids. We also have 1.2% of retirement expenses. That will be going away in the near future. Those are post-employment benefits that were promised a while back, and we're almost done paying those off completely. The extracurriculars are activities and coaching positions, and we have a small amount for substitutes. And then our support staff, which includes the office staff, as well as custodial and maintenance staff, and then the administration at 9%. This is a look at year-over-year, since 2011-12, a look at the benefit changes that we've made over that time. So it adds up to $2.4 million, almost $2.5 million in savings over those times just by adjusting benefits, bidding out insurance each year. So we've had to do that. We've had more flexibility with that since the 2011 Act 10 that went into place. We were able to make more adjustments because these are not bargain benefits anymore. So districts were able to save some money, and here at Arrowhead, we've saved almost $2.5 million over this period of time from 2011 to going into the next year. This last year, we've implemented an HRA plan to help reimburse our deductible expenses, but it still saved about $170,000 going into the new health plan year. This is a breakdown of the General Fund and the Capital Expansion Fund expenditures and where the increases or decreases are going into the upcoming year. So you can see, we've got a $340,000 increase in personnel, but a decrease of about almost $70,000 in the continuing budget and $50,000 in special education budget. And then the supplemental budgets is about the same as where it was last year, as well as the buildings and grounds and capital expenditure budget, pretty similar to last year. So this is the change from one year to the next in these line items. This is a look at the overall General Fund expenditures plus the Capital Expansion levy. So this is just a look at the tax levy. You can see it went from $24 million back in '10-11 up to $27 million. A major reason for that is the reduction in state aid. You saw earlier in a previous slide, we were losing 15% of our state equalization aid going into the next year, and as we see a decrease in state aid, you'll see an increase in your tax levy. And so that's what this slide is portraying here. Fund balance is a common question that comes up here and there, and I know this is a lot of words here, but just want to spend a little time on explaining the importance of fund balance. Fund balance is just a point in time. On June 30th of each year, we measure a district's fund balance, what's available. And it's not all cash, but it's inventory and things, but it's your equity at that point in time. And so that's used for emergency expenditures, it's used for cash flow. In fact, when we get to December, because of the way our tax receipts come in or our revenues come in, mostly tax receipts, we don't get our first tax receipts until January 15th, and with that, we're not getting much cash flow coming in up until that point in time. So in December, we get to a point of shortfall where we have to borrow money to make it through for cash flow purposes. So that's a reason you want to keep those reserves relatively high. Right now, we're sitting at about $8.5 million in fund balance, which 6.7 million is about three months of expenditures. That bottom paragraph is pointing that out. So that's a prudent amount to keep in your reserves, and going any lower than that will cause you to have to borrow more money and spend more expenditures on interest costs. So again, we're borrowing into that fund balance going into the upcoming year. We're using about $1.35 million for the 1920 budget to help support some of those capital improvement projects that we have. Now again, those are one-time expenditures. We wouldn't want to use fund balance for recurring expenditures because that will deplete it really quickly, and it'll be gone, and we'll be borrowing more and more. So on a one-time cost project that we're planning to use it for the upcoming year, the $1.3 million will work for that fashion, but you wouldn't want to use that on recurring personnel-type expenditures. Here's a look at the historical tax levy. I'm sorry, that previous slide I mentioned was tax levy, but that was total expenditures. So this one is tax levy. You can see, our tax levy last year was about $18.5 million. Going into the 1920, we're projecting a 2.8% increase of about bringing it up to $19 million. And again, that goes back to the 15% loss in state aid. The revenue limit formula determines what a district has available to them in terms of resources through state aid and property tax, and as that state aid number goes down, the property tax goes up. Here's a look at our tax levies and state equalization aid next to each other. So you can see, in the green near the bottom there, the numbers in terms of state aid are high point back in 2014 of almost $5.5 million. And now we're at our lowest point, shown on this slide, of $3.9 million is what we're projecting. That number will get determined in October. We'll have that certified, so that's our best estimate at this point in time. So this brings us to the tax levy estimate. And so the tax levy is broken down by several funds. The General Fund, our debt service fund, and non-referendum debt service and the Capital Expansion Fund. So the General Fund is the major general operations of the district, and going into next year, we're looking at just under $17 million for the General Fund in terms of tax levy. We have a $1.7 million levy for the debt service, and that's to pay the debt on the 1999 referendum, I believe. And then we have some non-referendum debt service, that's a small loan to pay, that comes out of our operating budget, a small loan that we took out a few years ago. I'm not sure exactly what that was.
Was for the South Campus Design Engineering Manufacturing.
Uh, thank you. Did everyone hear that? That was for the South Campus Design Engineering Manufacturing space. And then we have a small levy for the Capital Expansion Fund. Remember, we reduced that by $50,000 going into the new year, from $350,000 to $400,000. So that's the overall tax levy, bringing us to a 2.8% increase for the 1920 year. Here's a look at our mill rate. And so the mill rate is determined by taking the overall tax levy, dividing by the property value of the full district, and multiplying by 1,000. So you get a mill rate per $1,000 of property value. If you multiply the $3.10 times the fair market value of your property, this is going to get you close to the Arrowhead Union High School District's portion of the tax levy. There's also whichever K-8 district that you're living in, there's also that portion that goes into your tax levy, as well as Wisconsin Technical College, WCTC, would have a school levy on there. But the $3.10, just under a 1% increase over last year's tax levy rate compared to last year's $3.07, $3.07 tax levy rate. Here's a look at a comparison of what that levy rate looks like on a home back in, let's see, back in 2011. The home that we're looking at would have been valued at about $260,000. We took that same home and took the increases that have happened over time and got to what that home value would be today. It brings it up to about $270,000, $272,000. And so you can see, on that home over that period of time, the taxes have remained relatively stable. Some one year there, it hit $900, but going into the next year, we're looking at about an $845 Arrowhead High School District tax, portion of the tax levy on that home. So you might wonder, how are we doing here at Arrowhead in terms of cost per student and spending per student? This is a look at the union high schools across the state. There's only 10 of them across the state, and you can see, we're second from the lowest in terms of what we spend per student. So we're doing pretty well on the total cost to educate a student here at Arrowhead in comparison to the other 10 districts, 10 union high school districts across the state. And then this is a look at the mill rates across those union high school districts. Again, we're second from the bottom at $3.07, $3.07 per $1,000 of property value. So this is a point in time during our budget process, as I laid out the calendar or the timeline earlier when we first got started here. But there's some things that have happened since then. We've had a state biennial budget signed into law in July, and now we're waiting on a few things. So we're waiting on our September count. The 3rd Friday in September is a number that we'll use to determine our actual revenue limit for the 1920 school year. We're waiting on our certified equalization aid from the state. We'll get that certified on October 15th. And then we're waiting on our equalized property values, which we'll learn in October also. Once we have those final three numbers, we're able to determine what our final budget is and set the tax levy, bring that to the Board for approval. They'll approve it or adjust it as necessary, and then we'll be able to certify the levy to the municipalities here in the district. They'll deliver property tax bills from there. That's the end of the presentation. Is there any questions? Yes?
In the public materials that I've seen elsewhere, there's an intent to increase the staff by a third of the whole planning portfolio, and we have to draw myself down because I prefer to see staff, the head count, the street count, and we're going to spend up to the limit, revenue limit, and rather see it working. So there's maintenance and capital planning, that's how much we're going to assess in the district. Is there a reason to increase the staff or at least increase the number?
Typically, you would see a decrease in staff as the student enrollment count goes down. The .33 increase, I'm not exactly sure.
I think there's two factors involved there. One, our staffing, our students enroll in courses, and they kind of vote with their feet. And so depending on what courses they sign up for, it can increase or decrease class sizes and therefore staffing. So there are times where we're down in number of students, but yet the number of courses stay the same, or actually could even increase. Maybe we have, I don't know how many sections of courses, but we could have the same number or even additional courses with, let's say, 26 kids in a class, where the year before we had fewer sections and we have 30 kids in a class. So some of it is just...
Instead of the budget, students don't necessarily determine by size, or the education and the individual over, helps determine. So given my need that, I'd like to see a reduction by.
I understand that. The second factor would be special ed. So we are increasing special ed teachers, and that's purely based on the number of students with special needs and their individualized education plans. And so those plans require more staffing.
And those plans are mandated by law, the individual education plans for students.
Mullet expenses and revenue in the total number, I saw a decrease of about $69,000, $10,000.
Right. The mullet expenditures going into the next year will be no longer. That's been taken over by the HDM.
Before they begin the calculations, total expenditures were...
Not going into the new year, but they were in past years.
So although revenues...
I take that back, actually, because that would have been the Community Service Fund, so those are not included in those overall numbers, I don't think.
Okay, so the mullet center has always been out of the total expenditure?
Correct, because that would have ran through a separate fund.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more. In the maintenance area, are there any projects that are currently being referred or considered necessary by other management staff? In other words, are we addressing the needs for maintenance, really, the amount of money in the budget that's going to be?
I believe so. We know we have HVAC needs going forward, and we know we don't have enough money in the budget to cover those needs as fast as they're coming upon us. So we will be looking at other avenues to try to fund some of those projects because the equipment is getting older faster than the operating budget can sustain and replace them.
And on your benefit savings, HRA was it?
Right.
If that's $175,000 in savings going into the next year, is that because staff members are going to put up $1,000 more for our new?
It reduced the increase that we were going to see in a premium. We still saw a premium increase on those benefits, 9.9%.
If you're somehow reducing deductibles, how does that save money?
It saves over what we would have paid in an increase. So it brought that increase from whatever number it started at down to 9.9% is where we ended at, our health insurance increase.
By restructuring the insurance plan or...
By increasing deductibles and putting an HRA plan in place to help offset some of that deductible for the staff members. So we increased the deductibles on the overall plan and had...
About as much as $1,000.
I believe so.
It was even more.
Yeah.
It was by $1,500 for a name of...
So staff members will pay deductibles, $1,000 for their career work in 1590.
That's correct, and there's an HRA plan in place to help offset some of that cost to those employees. But that was a savings, that was a more efficient way of handling that cost and keeping that cost down for operations.
And that's above and beyond 12% staff participation cost insurance?
Correct. The staff is paying 12% contribution toward that insurance.
All right, and last one. Is there a timeline or a thought process or priorities being considered that we need to reflect on?
As I said, some of the HVAC equipment that we have in our facilities is aging faster than the operating budget can sustain it. And so those are some things that we'll be talking about in the year ahead of how do we tackle those costs when the operating budget and the reduction in revenue limit doesn't allow for us. So that referendum is always a potential to cover some of those costs.
Okay, now outside of those... Okay, now outside of those...
Correct. Yep. Question back?
I have a couple of questions. One of them is in regards to, I looked at the budget and the different functions. There's a function of attendance. I guess the first question is, how many attendance personnel are there per campus?
I know they're all, they're part-time positions. They're...
Right. We have one of the secretaries at each school, a portion, the majority of their position is about student attendance. Is that a question?
Because I saw in the function, it shows function, the attendance function, showing salary and benefits of $306,000 for coming budget for coming here. That's what, that's what I got off the website. It said, salary, salary was $200,000 plus benefits, and it said total amount for the 2019, 2020 year was $306,000 odd dollars for attendance under the attendance class.
We'll have to look at that. We only have two people.
Okay, because I was, my question was going to be, you know, with Arrowhead having the 97% attendance rating, you know, that, that 3%, is there really necessary to spend a kind of funds, you know, to detract the 3% of the kids that, you know, probably...
Yeah, we may be coding someone differently.
Right.
We could look into that. In fact, if, if you want to give, I'm Laura Myra, if you want to give me a call like in the next day or two, or drop me an email, I can look into that.
I just figured out the website. It's all, you know, the different functions on the website show breakdown of all the costs, and it says, it specifically says, under the attendance function, and that's what it says.
Yeah, we, I can dig into the detail of that. I'll get your name afterwards too, and make sure that I get an answer back to you on that one.
And then I have a second question. Kind of in regards to his question about the referendum, and you were talking about, you know, that might be a possibility in the future because of maintenance. I had brought a suggestion before the board a couple of years ago to look at selling the bit there part. That's 40 acre property that would be, you know, it's kind of prime for homes right now. And, you know, there was a proposal a few years back too, of spending like $5 million to renovate that and put La Crosse fields up in there. Obviously, the, you know, the district doesn't have $5 million to spend on something like that. My suggestion at that time, because, you know, maintenance items needed to be fixed, HVAC and so forth, why not propose sell that property? It's not going to be used, I mean, it's been an asset sitting for many years. Sell that property, use the funds for that to pay for the HVAC improvements and whatever else, maintenance items need to be fixed. There's no cost to the taxpayers from that, that, in the future, no referendum needed. That's all, that's, that could be a huge asset, a lot of money that could be used to make those repairs.
We actually, it's three years ago or four years ago now, we, that idea was discussed by the school board. We went out and we got the estimate of what that property value was worth, and at that point in time, it had not increased in the value of what was spent on it. In fact, if I remember correctly, it was down about $100,000. So at the time, the board decided, we're not going to sell it for a loss, let's just wait and see, let's just hold on to it. And now as we're hitting increasing student enrollment decline, and the budget is getting tighter and tighter, that is something that we will likely be discussing, in how we manage the decreasing budget. So I appreciate that feedback, because...
I think that was purchased back in 2001, so, you know, with home values, property values, I mean, subdivision's now being open, and they're getting some pretty good prices for property. I mean, they're selling pretty well. I gotta believe that that property's gotta be increased tremendously since 2001 purchase price.
Well, it wasn't as of three years ago. Hopefully now it is, and then the board can decide, is that something that we, we want to hang on to that land for a purpose, or is it more advantageous to sell that property, which could help with the budget situation?
Okay, and your... Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you again for attending tonight and hearing a little bit about our budget, and we'll move into the annual meeting here next.
Okay, everybody can hear me okay? All right, we're going to call our annual meeting to order. The meeting will be called or ordered by the president or vice president of the school board, who will serve as a temporary chairperson until the election or the permanent chairperson. First, introduce myself. My name is Bob Roche, I'm the current president of the Arrowhead School Board, and I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce my colleagues on the school board and which districts they represent. We have nine board members on the board, seven are, represent specific feeder schools, and two are serve at large. So I'd like to introduce Kent Rice, who represents the Richmond School District, Sue Schultz, who represents the North Lake School District, Craig Thompson, who is one of our at-large members, Donna Behringer, who represents the Heartland Lakeside School District, Tim Langer, who represents the Stone Bank School District, Dave Dean is our second at-large member, Amy Hemmer represents the Merton School District, and Daryl Benneker represents the Lake Country School District. I'd also like to introduce our administrators that are here. You met Jeff. Jeff is, he's new on our team, but he's not new to Arrowhead, as he explained, and we stole him from a neighboring district, so their loss, our gain, so, and, excuse me. And also like to introduce Laura Myra, who is our superintendent here at Arrowhead, and Laura will be presenting shortly. Also, I introduce Diane Hope. Diane is our recording secretary. So as we get into the meeting, if you make a motion or second motion, please state your first name and second name, so she gets the minutes correct for the annual... Next, I would ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. Flag's on the stage here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with grace and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. Our first action item is election of a chairperson. The person still elected may or may not be a member of the school board. If the meeting is adjourned to another date, the same chairperson will decide. So open up the floor for nominations for chairperson.
I nominate Bob Roche.
Also, I have a nomination.
We have a motion and a second for Bob Roche to serve as the chairperson. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is just a treasurer's report. This is not an action item, but the treasurer report, as summarized through Jeff's commentary, is also noted on page 17 through 21 of the annual report document, if you're able to get that at the table. And then the treasurer report, the complete treasurer's report will be available at the district office when the 2018, 2019 audit is complete. Next, I'd like to introduce our superintendent, Laura Myra, who'll give us a review of the past school year.
Thank you, Bob. I'm Laura Myra. I'm the proud superintendent here at Arrowhead, and I thank you for being here, and it's my pleasure to review some information from all of the successes at Arrowhead during the 2018, 19 school year. Our vision is at Arrowhead is to be an educational leader in creating pathways for students to embrace the opportunities for tomorrow. And our mission is to empower our students to be engaged, confident, continuous learners who utilize the essential skills to collaborate and contribute within the local and global community. We want our students to be successful, not just while they're in high school, but when they move beyond our walls. To achieve our mission and vision, we continually strive toward four enduring goals. These are long-term goals, five to eight years. We plan to have these goals to prepare students for success beyond high school graduation. We don't see that goal ever going away. We want to foster a nurturing, positive learning culture that's important for our students and staff. We have a goal to communicate effectively. We're always looking to, looking to enhance communications. And we want to advance our facility infrastructure and technology to support student learning and increase safety on our campus. The vision, the mission, and the enduring goals, we put that together and we call it our focus plan. And virtually everything we do at Arrowhead for our students is wrapped into our focus Jeff talked about the financial area of our district, so I will just touch on a few pieces, and some of it is reiterating what Jeff said in terms of our fiscal responsibility. Over the last 10 years, the district has reduced its budget, had to reduce its budget by over $5 million. Arrowhead maintains a Moody's rating of AA1, that's better than approximately 90% of the school districts in Wisconsin. Our fund balance that Jeff explained, while healthy at over 25% right now, that has needed to be used for recent one-time building projects, capital improvement projects. So it's, it's strong and healthy, but using approximately $1.4 million a year is not sustainable, as we will be doing for next year. Employee benefit changes since 2011, '12 school year have resulted in an annual cost savings of about $2.5 million. And despite our increasing operational costs, things cost more every year, our per pupil expense remains right about at state average. You saw this in a different format from Jeff's presentation during the budget hearing. The average cost per student in Wisconsin is about $13,500. At Arrowhead, we're at $13,594, so right about the state average, and then we have a comparison of those union high schools. Toward the bottom, I have the mill rate, and again, you heard last year, our mill rate was $3.07. That's not an apples-to-apples comparison with most school districts, because most school districts in our state are K-12. And so if you take Arrowhead's mill rate and the K-8 district where you reside, if you add those two together, that provides the school portion of your tax bill. In terms of union high school, you see the averages 3.51 cents, and we are lower than Also on your property tax bill, you, you have your Arrowhead portion, you have your K-8 portion. Like, for instance, I live in the Heartland Lakeside area, so I have a Heartland Lakeside portion of my tax bill. There's a Waukesha County Technical College portion, there's the municipality portion. Another portion that citizens may not realize, within the school, within the public school portion of your taxes, there is money coming out that's for private and parochial schools. So you can see what we paid last year on this slide and what we're projecting for this upcoming school year. Private school vouchers, special needs scholarship vouchers, private school transportation contracts, and the Milwaukee Charter School Program. So next year, we're projecting about $285,000 of our tax levy under the name Arrowhead is actually for private and parochial schools. As a comparison with Waukesha County, we've showed you comparisons with the K, or with the union high schools. And just to get a feel for the maximum tax levy revenue per student in Waukesha County, this was last year, 2018, '19. School districts in Waukesha County aren't, they're not funded the same, and so you'll see Arrowhead High School, and we're in the average of the K-8 districts, to make us similar to all those others that are K-12 school districts. We receive about $1,600 less per student than the highest tax revenue per student district, which means we're, we're educating our students with about $3 million less, but yet we're proud to say our student achievement, what we get for that money is as high or higher than all of those other school districts. Which leads right into some student achievement information. The Department of Public Instruction provides student achievement data. It always lags a year behind, and in this particular year, part of their data is lagging two years behind. I actually called the Department of Public Instruction, asked about that, because the ACT scores for graduates, usually we get those in early August, those are delayed this year until October. So what you have here is a compilation of, many of the scores are from the 2018 school year, but that ACT graduate scores that I have displayed are from the 2017 school year, because that is the most current information available from the Department of Public Instruction. So as you see, Arrowhead's score is in terms of student achievement, very high. The ACT graduate score is from college-bound students. About three years ago, the state started requiring the ACT of all juniors in public high schools, and so you can see that score differs a little bit from that of graduates. And Arrowhead is second highest in that in 2018. And then our advanced placement exam passing scores, we tend to stay around 90% or higher, which is really high in terms of state average. Advanced placement exams are college-level exams taken by high school students. So at Arrowhead, we have, I believe, 17 advanced placement courses that students are taking while in high school that are actually college courses. That passing rate of a three, four, or five on a one-to-five scale, what's important about that is if a student earns a three, four, or five on that advanced placement exam, they can earn college credit. So we have students earning college credit while they're taking classes here at Arrowhead. That same exam is given nationwide, and this is how we compare to some of our neighboring school districts in Waukesha County. That's the 2018 data. We do have our most recent advanced placement scores, kind of hot off the press, just for Arrowhead. We won't see this for our other school district comparisons until next summer. But as you can see, we have a 91.3% passing rate from last spring. We're very proud of that. Our teachers work really hard in those classes to teach at a rigorous level, and our students work really hard to, to learn at a rigorous level. Student participation and a successful education. Again, we've got information that's lagging from the Department of Public Instruction. Some of this information is from 2018, and then some of it has not been updated yet, and so it's actually two years behind. Our graduation rate in four years is 99.3%. Five-year graduation rate, which the state reports as well, 98.3%, much higher than state average. Graduation or graduate plans, how many students plan to attend college, enter the workforce or military? You can see that during the 2018 school year, about 88% of our students planned on going to a four-year school, about 12% to a two-year college, 3.5% planned on entering workforce immediately, and about 1% of our students went into the military. And that slide shows the comparisons with state averages. Our attendance rate is high, our discipline rate is low, and then the lagging data, again, I'm sorry that it isn't just current, but co-curricular participation is very high at Arrowhead. We have just over 2,100 students, and we've got anywhere between 17 and 1,900 students that participate in co-curricular programs. That's an important part of our school at Arrowhead. It's not just the academic piece, but that co-curricular piece. And then community activities, the volunteerism at this school is incredible. This data from 2017 is showing 79%. We know internally, we're higher than that. We're closer to 85 to 90% of our students are doing some sort of community service and volunteerism, compared to the rest of the state at 33%. Some academic highlights from the 2018, '19 school year. Now, it's fun to do these celebrations, and it's hard for me to pull together what to share, because there's so much good news, and the next several slides are just some samples. 72% of Arrowhead's graduating class last, last spring earned a GPA of 3.0 or higher. Again, the U.S. News and World Report and the Washington Post named Arrowhead as best high schools and most challenging high schools. as best high schools and most challenging high schools. And for the first time in recent history at Arrowhead, a graduating senior, Anthony Sikorski, was named a Presidential Scholar. There are a few million students that qualify to apply to be a Presidential Scholar. When it boils down to the who applies, they do all the scoring. Of millions that qualify, only 161 students were chosen as Presidential Scholars, and Anthony was one of a few from Wisconsin. Perhaps what's most surprising about that is that he was only 14 years old as a high school graduate. He started here as a nine-year-old and graduated at 14. He's going on to college next year as a 14-year-old. And our National Secretary of Education, her picture's up there, Betsy DeVos. She, as she talked with Anthony's mom, Jill, she asked Jill, "Please keep in touch with me, so I hear how he does over the years." Just a couple of special events I'd like to highlight. Arrowhead loves veterans. We support our veterans in the community every year through multiple ways. We hold an annual Veterans Day dinner, we hold a veterans coffee in spring, or not dinner, breakfast, I'm sorry. We hold an annual spaghetti fundraiser for the Stars and Stripes Honor Flight Program each February. We have students write letters to veterans. Hundreds of letters have gone to veterans from our Arrowhead students. Arrowhead students welcome back veterans from their honor flights. We've had our band perform, our dance team perform. So we are fans of our veterans. And in the picture, that's Chuck and Bev, a couple of our favorite veterans that come to all of our events. And then another highlight to mention, Arrowhead began a new class called Coaching and Officiating last year. And that class was highlighted not only on local TV news, kind of picked up this unique class, but it also was highlighted and articles were written about it in national video and publications, including Referee Magazine. Another component of our school that I mentioned before that we're particularly proud of is that volunteering and community service. Our clubs, classes, and athletic groups volunteered for well over 150 projects last school year, totaling over 10,000 hours of volunteer time. In fact, it was probably closer to 12,000 hours. The projects they've done through volunteering, it's a wide range. Everything from helping local families and children in need, or local organizations such as Children's Hospital, all the way to building a schoolroom in Tanzania last summer. That volunteerism, not only does it help our community, but we feel it really helps our students. Those are life skills that are important for our students to learn. Additional special events. We've had numerous really impressive music concerts. Last year, I commented about the, our art show, so this year I'm focusing on music. Lots of performances. We just have really talented, involved students. We also like to highlight some of our graduates. And this last year, eight of our former Arrowhead students were inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame during a ceremony in April. Six of them are represented in the photo here, there were two that were unable to attend. And Arrowhead, again, hosted a fun and learning-filled community math night. There were students and families here from all of our feeder schools, as well as high school students. And it was hard to tell if it was the big kids, the high schoolers having more fun, or the younger kids, down to four-years-old, were all doing math together. Some co-curricular highlights. We had 10 individual students and one team nominated as top athletes in the Journal Sentinel High School Sports Awards. I believe we had three of those 10 students win for individuals, and our girls lacrosse team won for the team award of fan favorites. Our Classic Eight Sportsmanship Awards this year were earned by boys golf and boys hockey. We had dozens of students have their writing, whether it's fiction, nonfiction, or poetry, published. Teen Inc. Magazine tends to be like more Arrowhead than any other high school students across the country publishing. And nearly 100 Arrowhead students were able to experience culture and service and international trips. Last school year, students went to Italy, Ecuador, and Thailand. Additional co-curricular highlights. Six Arrowhead teams were conference champions, and 10 teams won their sectionals qualifying for state, plus numerous individuals qualified for state. State champion teams last year were boys ski, they won for the fourth year in a row. Girls lacrosse were the state champions for the sixth year in a row. And our Special Olympics volleyball program team won their state competition. And then our girls field hockey was the state runner-up. Plus, we had several individual state champs and runners-up. Now, there's certain teams like track, where you compete as a team and an individual. Or wrestling, you compete as a team and an individual. So we had some individual state champs. Arrowhead was awarded third place in the WSN Cup Large School Division. We've been in the top three for the 12 years in a row that that award has been in place. And DECA, our marketing, our business and marketing club, broke records with 37 members, 37 kids qualifying to go to the state competition. And of those 37, 28 qualified and went to nationals. We like to recognize our staff. We've got 229 permanent staff members, and they are excellent. So up here on the screen, there's just a few samples of some awards or recognitions from particular teachers. There are many more that we could have lots of slides. But Mr. Greg Bisby earned an Excellence in Science Teaching Award. He is on the far right side of the screen. Mr. Jeff Lutzwager earned a Technology Teaching Excellence Award, the top left side of the screen. Both of these awards are only given to a few teachers in the state of Wisconsin, and two of ours earned them this year. Ms. Heidi Hamilton is a special education teacher here at Arrowhead, and she was the Wisconsin recipient of a first-ever National University System Stanford Teacher Award. Mr. Jim Hessler was named a distinguished teacher within the Presidential Scholar Program. So when Anthony Sikorski was named a Presidential Scholar, he was able to nominate one of our teachers. He chose Mr. Hessler, and Mr. Hessler won that recognition, so a national recognition. So from some national recognitions, down to even local recognitions, like the Mr. Carwash Teachers Who Shine Award was earned by Liz Jorgensen, an English teacher here at Arrowhead. We've got a lot of great things going on inside our school with staff and students. But the foundation, some of the backbone of what makes Arrowhead successful is our supportive and generous community. Our many volunteers, donors, and supportive community members, we appreciate you and we're glad you're here. Just some examples, the Arrowhead Scholarship Foundation gave over $84,000 in scholarships this year to 82 graduating seniors. And during the last school year, nearly $300,000 was donated to Arrowhead through generous individuals and organizations. They were for projects, initiatives, and different departments in our school. For instance, the Mullet Ice Center, quarter, over a quarter million dollars donated. Athletic and co-curricular clubs received donations. The graduation senior party always receives graduater donations. Our Design Engineering Manufacturing Center, both at South Campus and North Campus, received some funding through donations. And then finally, donors help us in terms of putting on our Veterans Day breakfast and the Veterans Spaghetti Dinner. So looking ahead to the next school year, I'll wrap up where I started. The mission of Arrowhead will continue to be to empower students to be engaged, confident, continuous learners who utilize essential skills to collaborate and contribute within the local and global community. This coming school year, we're going to be focusing on college career and life readiness for our students through academic rigor, as well as social, emotional, and life skill enhancement. We're looking at continuing to foster our positive learning culture. We want to integrate technology more into supporting learning and academic career exploration for our students. We will look to enhance our support services for individual students in the area of academics and also social and emotional needs. We will continue strengthening our communications with the community, our communications and public relations. And we will look to enhance technology, safety, and physical plant infrastructure. We have a great school year ahead coming, and we thank you for your interest and support of Arrowhead High School. Thank you for being here this evening. Any questions? Yes?
A couple years ago, the state of Wisconsin had a 10%, and Arrowhead's record scheme was passing two to four-year post-technical training programs. Need a remedial work. Has there been any follow-up report from the state relating to that or making progress?
We do not, to my knowledge, we do not have information about remedial courses for Arrowhead students specifically. We have, we see-
Three years ago, there was a foundation that was-
Right. So I don't have information to share about Arrowhead specifically. I do know that on a state level, I don't know about nationally, but a state level, that was about the average, it was 10 to 15% of students going into four-year schools. It wasn't a two-year school report, it was a four-year school. Needed some sort of remediation in particular math and reading. Math seemed to be the neediest area. I don't have specific information for Arrowhead. As a state, we've improved in that way. There's more communication now between K-12 districts and the college level than ever before. We have joint meetings administration from colleges and from school districts, and really looking at a K-16 continuum instead of just K-12. And that's going to benefit students if we can look at transitions up into college. Do we have overlap in curriculum? Do we have gaps in curriculum? So on a state level, we're looking to improve that. Arrowhead, we're always striving to best prepare our students for whatever their future holds, whether that's four-year, two-year college, careers, military.
So the last two years have changed the way that you approach that with, at Arrowhead?
At Arrowhead? Every single year, we review curriculum and look to improve curriculum and coursework. We also work closely with our K-8 school districts. As you can imagine, having seven different schools, just public schools feeding into Arrowhead, and then private schools as well, those kids are coming with a vast difference of curricular strengths. And so we do work with them to help the K-8s understand what Arrowhead's looking for and for us to understand the level of the students that are coming in. We actually offer more math, a more differentiated math program for our freshmen, our youngest students, than any high school I've ever seen. The coursework from remedial work, support or remedial work, up to really high-level math for, well, for freshmen. But we actually have, oh gosh, probably 40 students, 50 students each year that are middle-school-level students that come here to Arrowhead, or we have a teacher go to those schools to help with appropriate math instruction. Good questions? Thank you very much.
All sorts of landlines back here.
All right, thanks Laura. As a recap to this program that she presents here, there's so many things that occur in these buildings throughout the school year that it's hard to put it all in a PowerPoint presentation like this. But the board is fortunate enough that we get to experience it pretty much every day. And it's just amazing what is being accomplished within our facilities for our students, so that's outstanding. So the next action item is a procedure to set the annual meeting date. Would entertain a motion to allow the Board of Education to set the date in time between May 15th and October 31st of 2020 for our next annual meeting.
I move that the board have the ability to set the annual date, the date for the annual meeting between May 15th and October 31st of 2020.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions on that? If you're not all in favor, state aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under Old Business, if anyone has any questions regarding last year's operation, we'll answer if best possible. Now's the time to bring up any old business if anybody wants to bring anything up. Nothing? Okay. On our new business. First action item is district-owned textbooks. Would entertain a motion to approve the following fee schedule for book rental to be at $55.
I'll move to approve the following, the schedule for book rental at $55.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Sue? Any questions on that?
Same change from earlier?
I believe it's the same here. So we have a mo-
The whole faculty schedule is in addition.
Correct, yeah, there's a fee schedule that-
So it's also being modified?
If there's any changes, we approved those earlier this, in like May, I think it was. Some of them adjust a little bit here and there, it depends on the cost of what we have to pay for the material. But most, pretty much everything has stayed pretty steady. Yeah, easily. So, okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the book fee. All in favor, state aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is the salary of the school board members. The annual meeting establishes the salaries of the school board members. At the present time, annual salaries are established at $3,400 per board member. I would entertain a motion to set the school board salaries.
I move that the salaries be kept at the same level of $3,400 per year?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, to maintain the salaries at $3,400 a year. All in favor, state aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next, the two separate action items on the tax levy for the ensuing year. The first one will be the tax levy for the capital expansion fund. The resolution is on page 22 of the annual report. And that would set that capital expansion fund at $300,000 is what's being recommended. I can read the motion, or if anybody is okay, it's in the book. But the motion is to set it at $300,000.
I heard that you said at $300,000. And you were, you're a member of state that we've got increasing facility costs. The wisdom of animal markets, I support that. Like, we gotta follow it, and the way that we prepare our budget. But that was my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to set it at $350,000, is there a second to that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so we have a second for discussion. Do you want to point anything out there about that, or?
I wanted to, just a second-
Okay.
To absorb it and better understand.
We have, just for some background information on our, we have a facility plan that we utilize. It helps us determine our budgeting each year as to what is priorities. So we have priorities 1, 2, and 3, basically. And it all depends on the funding, but also depends on the most urgent need. So we balance that with replacing either equipment that we know is aged out or is completely failless, with improvements to like, we was mentioning, upgrades in our woods area, our woods classroom here. That's kind of a progression of what we've been doing with the South Campus facilities, with our engineering area, moving that effort to North Campus to upgrade. Last year, we upgraded the metals engineering- Last year, we upgraded the metals engineering area there. This year, we did the woods area and then eventually we'll work our way into automotive area. So there, we have a list that we work off of and every year it kind of gets maneuvered around. And then the $300,000, as Jeff explained, that allows us to carry over like roof projects. Unless you get them all done before July 1st, which is not possible, you have to have this carryover amount of money to help pay those bills past July 1st. That's why that fund is established that way. Otherwise, if you operate under the normal fund, the normal budget, you have to have all your expenditures done by basically June 30th of that, of that year, so.
Again, my question is, what's the rationale for reducing $350,000 to $300,000? If we take it on before the payment out of the general fund, you know, we've got maintenance and things that we truly do not prioritize enough to reduce other expenses.
Right, well, we took 350,000, I'm sorry, we took 50,000 out of that, but if you also notice, the, the normal fund actually went up $50,000 because it's at 1.7 million for funding plus the, the, I'm sorry, it's 1.4 million dollars for the normal funding and the $300,000. So the one slide that Jeff showed actually showed the general fund went up $50,000, so we're basically spending the same amount of money.
The big difference with that is that's actually Fund 41. Fund 41 is a kind of special fund from the standpoint that things in the general fund have to be spent in that budget year. Can't be carried over. So if you start a roofing project, it has to be done by the end of the, end of the budget, end of the budget year. Fund 41 allows you to set one aside that can actually carry over through to the second budget, uh, the, the next budget period. That's basically the difference. So if we increase the 300 to 350, what we'd end up doing is taking 50,000 out of the general fund to accommodate the 50,000 increase in the, in Fund 41's balance. That wash.
Thank you for a better understanding. Please move along with the call.
Okay, so we have a motion to set that $350,000. Do we have a second? All in favor, state aye. Opposed? Opposed? Okay, motion fails. So I would entertain a motion that we set it at $300,000 as recommended for the ensuing school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Correct. We have a motion, and, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve it at $300,000.
So, yeah, the first thing is that if we increase the capital fund assessment through the tax levy, that we have to not spend $50,000 elsewhere? So it doesn't accomplish anything, would you tell us?
Right. It doesn't allow us to tax more to get more money into the district. It just allows this one to-
It would set a priority, wouldn't it? Who would prioritize that spending or that provision for future period of spending? Something else would happen, yes. That's my point. You are not providing for something else to give. Instead, you're gonna fund things out of the general fund to the tune of $140,000.
Well, this year we took-
So you look at the district, $140,000 less financially secured, rising fund, or out of the year, or something like that.
Well, effectively what we did, this year we took over a million dollars, a million and a half, million and a half dollars out of our fund balance because we couldn't fund it with the general fund. But council, are we, excuse me? No, we didn't have the money in the general fund that we could fund it, so we had to get our fund balance.
So, but you're spending a twenty-something million dollars. It's a matter of priority, isn't it?
It's always a matter of priority.
So, when you say we, we have to take the million dollars, uh, to carry over safety down to the fund, that's not true if you chose prioritizing differently. The argument is, I don't see the board prioritizing to the reality of the requirements to keep the buildings going up.
Well, you, but you gotta remember, the main thrust and the main function of the district is to educate our students. If we didn't take that million and a half out of fund balance, we would've had to cut back on personnel-
That's right.
-and those kinds of things to maintain the buildings.
You don't do that.
Okay, points been made.
Okay.
We'll call a question. All in favor of setting it at $300,000? State aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next action item is tax levy for operations and long-term debt services in the amount of $18,762,157 is recommended for the ensuing school year. The total 20, 19, 20, 20 tax levy is proposed to be $19,062,157 with the inclusion of the capital expansion fund levy. I'll entertain a motion to set the tax levy.
So move. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the annual meeting.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second? And a second. All in favor, state aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.